All the meeting of the city of Bisbee planning zoning commission work session, May thirty, two thousand twenty-four. So Paul, Mike, Abel, David Brown, David Cox, and the staff here, I mean, Mr. Peter, Andy Housman, Don Taylor.
Here.
My two hour staff with us on.
Here.
And I have one is infill incentive district stakeholder, discussion of infill incentive district stakeholder.
Oh, great.
Yours.
All right, I'm glad everybody could make it. So really quickly, I just want to let everybody know, uh, you're gonna have, um, our, uh, so we were gonna have a June thirteenth meeting, uh, twenty twenty-four implementation program. Um, no, we're not gonna have anything in July. And then we'll have something on August eighth. This will be land use element thing. Um, you're going to have a, around early September, hopefully, our first review of our draft documents and our first public hearing, which, so in September, we'll have a public hearing for the planning, if we had the planning in zoning being on September fifth. So, um, anyway, uh, talk a bit about our infill incentive. So, um, I kind of give you a little bit of information about the infill incentive districts. So, uh, I kind of included just kind of like what some of the states, um, growing smarter plus plan, like what they essentially said would sort of qualify as that would make an, an area in infill incentive districts. So, um, I don't, there are some things, elements would be like the large number vacant older dilapidated buildings, large number of vacant, underutilized parcels, uh, absence of development and investment activity and decline the population, uh, so. Basically, they were saying that you could, you know, if you have these, experienced any, any of these things in these areas, you can have expedited zoning or rezoning procedures, processing of plans or proposals, uh, waivers of fees, it's kind of like our overlay, basically. So, um, but, so what I was thinking about was, uh, moving forward in, in sort of like our growth areas is working on a water management plan, right? Uh, so incorporating more water management in future developments. And I'm thinking about, um, some of the rules kind of and policies set forth by, say, the result, the Sonoran Institute. Essentially, uh, wanted, you know, require new developments to have holistic water management, watershed help incentives, um, you know, regulations. Think, uh, what we're looking at probably is, and see Cochise County has a water conservation, uh, policy. And kind of it's their, their project is called Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network, have you guys are familiar with that? No, yeah, so they essentially like, um, some of the projects that, that is included in that is like the Bisbee effluent recharge project, essentially where they're wanting to take the, you know, wastewater and recharge the, uh, San Pedro River. Uh, also, one of the things that they've, that I was thinking would be really a great thing to explore would be to working with, uh, transportation and civil engineering professionals. And, uh, in, and where possible, um, using green stormwater infrastructure in, um, in road improvements. So, uh, which I mean, you're familiar with that, with that. So that's one idea is having, uh, per, using permeable services instead of, uh, like straight up asphalt parking lots. And, um, rezoning, uh, 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 any, any fine unit developments would require a water conservation standards that we could set for it. What do you, what do you think about, uh, those? Any ideas you wanna expand upon? Yes? Yes.
And I, I have to say, I think there's some other things to that, but I love to, I love that you're headed that way.
Yeah.
But I, uh, wrote up for historic, a tree ordinance.
Yeah.
That the city attorney sent a letter out to all of us and said, Bisbee is not in the business of saving trees, the trees will incline it, uh, water retention. That's gonna have to be part of it. Um, I don't know where you're gonna go with that. I, whenever you say, um, you know, different alternative surfacing and all that, I think that's stumbling block, but I think we should put the ideals on. And the first thing I saw was it said, uh, vacant or underutilized parcels, and I'm wondering what underutilized they, what their definition of underutilized or inappropriate lot and parcel side.
You know, it's interesting because that, that was in our, our last general plan and they did not really make a definition for that. So I, I think that our job right now would be to sort of come up with the criteria for what that really means, so we can kind of uh, sort of expand it, you know? I mean, I also think that their definition for that kind of stuff is, is twenty years old. And I think that we just have such a wildly different perspective on, on land use in open space now compared to two thousand three, two thousand four, you know? So it's kind of a fun thing to kind of think about, you know? Um, I, I tend to always defer to like planning, sort of, uh, planning studies, documents, uh, research papers, academic sources for a lot of where I get my information about how to determine these things. Uh, you know, I think about the America Planning Association. Um, there's also, uh, a lot of stuff these days, especially with, um, here in Arizona, you know, it was the, the Sonoran Institute, which I, I've been familiar with the Sonoran Institute. So they, they, you are familiar with them? Yeah. Uh, they do, you know, they do a lot of great water management for Southern Arizona and actually all over the United States or the West specifically, but they've done, um, a plan with Douglas. And, um, so we can always look at their Douglas plan and see, and see what they've determined. We could also contact them. I actually went through the, um, some of their, their, um, documents. And I totally forgotten that I had took photos for, for them for, and they actually incorporated some of the photo that I had taken into the document of the, one of their documents a few years ago. And I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot I did that. So anyway, but, um.
But you have a definition.
I mean, I, I tend to, I mean, in my brain, I, I think that excess parking spaces are underutilized, underutilized land.
And yet we have. Like excuse.
Yeah.
It sounds like it may not be parking, but then the park. It's a little messy, I feel, that's not your, your definition, but just the task of coming up with a plan that says this is not
Yeah.
Forward.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of the, I mean, the thing with the parking is, and that's gonna be further down, but so I, and the thing about the, the second section that we addressed is parking is that I'm really thinking about ways that we can do, uh, figure out parking, especially in our growth areas where we end up having the right amount of parking and not excessive parking. Um, I think that in Old Bisbee, you know, we were talking a lot about parking, coming up with a coming up with a way to create more parking in the area that everybody comes to from other places, right? So they have to drive there. So, uh, I think that that's still its own kind of, kind of worms, you know?
And what, uh, are you talking about Old Bisbee or are you talking Safeway? I mean, I, Safeway has plenty of.
Yeah, I know, Safeway has plenty of.
Same as they have.
Yeah, yeah.
But Old Bisbee doesn't, but Old Bisbee doesn't have. Places where we've bad at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting that the, the conversation about parking in Old Bisbee. You know, we still haven't really addressed that in a way that really, you know, I, I came across a document that you had written twenty sixteen. Um, and it talks about the parking in Old Bisbee. And it's been an ongoing conversation and I'm just very curious how we are going to address that, you know? I mean, I, I could look, I could look into it more. There's a lot of ideas. But, um.
Did you see the, the plan that Judy Anderson and I did?
What was the name of that plan?
It was, it was a presentation to the planning of zoning. And it was a parking presentation. I thought we, we didn't really come.
Was it, was it with, um, a different organization or?
I, I don't have access to my. There's a lot of stuff in there they kept.
Um, I hope they did. I think that it's always great to build upon the work of others that people have done.
But I think that will tell you that this is an ongoing issue. It would be wonderful if we could solve it, but
Yeah.
You know, I do think, and this was sort of the gist of what Judy and I came up with here. I do think that off-site is the, the solution, like parking people on maybe mine property that they lease or something, or they let us you, uh, like, you know, parking in mall and then having a having transportation that just goes back and forth. So that the city, Old Bisbee city park can be what, you know, we want to increase tourism.
Yeah.
We don't have any place for them to come to on Saturday. It's their big day. I can't even help spot parking that. I'm not bringing that into it because that's the price you pay to live in a city like Bisbee.
Yeah.
Or Prattstown, Massachusetts, or Nantucket, or wherever, you get people who come. And that's your, we don't have a mine. We mining tourism.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, it's essentially, yeah, that's our money makers.
You know, people who complain about tourism don't know how this economy runs.
So we're talking infill, right? Infill in Old Bisbee was underutilized. Uh, was there once a house there, right? Dilapidated, there's plenty of those.
Yeah.
But to, to implement a car park rule, you know, if you find sixty-four acres there, there's hardly have a car park. But if you have some kind of improvement or impact fund that says, hey, developer, you wanna develop this lot, you gotta make this fee and take those funds towards an off-site public parking structure. Perhaps that's a.
Yeah, that's, that is a solution, right? A, a solution, and I think that would be a good one. Uh, yeah.
I've seen, I've seen some plans, I don't know, it's written on the website, somebody has parking structure and like.
In the pages of lot, they saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um.
Yeah, well, that's it. And they, they stated that the engineering was the issue that in years. And because there's a, uh, basically a tunnel that goes under.
Yes, that's the lot, the, the pay lot, right? Yeah, it's a.
And that tunnel, you know, it has, when it's really rainy, it has a bit of flow and it always has some flow. I've been down in that. You should go down in there.
Well, I've been, I've been down, yeah.
It's, uh, pretty amazing, but it is not insurmountable, you know? We'll have to get some ancient Egyptian.
I, uh, I I mean, it's interesting. I mean, that'd always be my thing, you know, like.
Yeah.
That, that's the only challenge though, is that in that area right there, you, you know, it's private, somebody's private property and so I, I feel like that really.
Well, it's for sale for a number of years and.
Really?
Yeah. Could have been.
That's, you know.
Well, certainly there are opportunities in terms of what you're talking about. Another option uh, for you is the, the area right at entrance off of Aiden, uh, which the city has, um, the right of way off of Aiden, and there's land on your, on the, your side, Aiden was the mine viewer side of Aiden. It's several mile space. And I, I certainly, when I was on the couch, when you actually designed how that could be utilized, that had not, that not happened, but anyway, that certainly is a.
That was in that proposal, I believe, that, that was the one before Judy and I did. And I think that it got said that it could. But I can see, we should be exploring those. That would be a lot of.
That'd be probably certainly some positive.
Yeah.
Plan, speed, pipeline.
Yeah.
Form of influence in the whole.
Yeah, definitely. So this is the area, uh, uh, as you're on the eighty entering Naoko Road.
Right on your immediate left, there's people, lot of space there. Backwise, even more space over across Aiden, front of the mine.
Yeah, yeah, and there's an upper level too, the mine tour.
Well, and there's, there's a big grass area as you come down the metro. Call that, but certainly access from under the underpass to eighty. And there's a, quite a large grass area there.
Oh, I see, and it's all probably Ada.
And it's Ada, but I.
Ada, and.
Uh, the, the underutilized parcels. By his parcels or appropriate parcels. Is it the monetization of that parcel or is it the area for infill that, you know, certain person would, would.
Yeah, so I think that, um, right now, I, I like, I like to always think about things in terms of the current needs in the context, so underutilized parcels, you could be the land in the city that would have access to utilities that could be used for housing, you know, for example.
And what would we do with it?
I mean, we could do it, but we could encourage type of developments. Like housing, you know, development, something on them.
And please forgive me, I'm not trying to harm you, but what would encourage?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, we have this impact piece. There's waving of impact. There's, um, kind of like with our infill, with our infill overlay. Think allowing a different mix of types of housing and or building happen on the.
Kind of study.
Yeah, reduction of, of minimum of mineral lot sizes. So if you have weird irregular sized parcels, you know, that aren't as big, like, you know, Bisbee, you can really get away with, I think, building a lot of stuffs, uh, on, on parcels. Uh, you know, you would still have to go by the rules of the DRB on exterior, on exterior surface, right, of the building. But, um, I also think that part of it too is just putting effort into encouraging people to do things and by giving them information. Sometimes I think that people are, they're, they're unaware of what they can do, you know, for example, the ADU, ADU thing that, you know, the ordinance. Yeah, there's just hasn't been that many ADUs being built.
Sexy surprise.
Right, and you thought people were really gonna take advantage of that, people have a lot, it's really a big lot that they live on. But part of the challenge, I think, is that people don't realize, like, you, you can change the code. People kind of know about it, but it kind of, it's, it's sort of like a thing where it's, it's like, why don't you make good choices? Like, you go to the doctor or something. Doctor's like, well, you know, if you ate more greens, then you'd be healthier. And it is, leave it at that, but you don't know anything about cooking healthy food, you're just, it's balance or whatever, you know, so.
On the ADU, I've seen cities, I think, revise plans.
Yeah.
And cost estimates, which really help the average person.
Yeah.
Possibility.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, totally. You know, um, I think that would be the sort of district, you know? We were talking a bit about, about ways to encourage building in historic district, you know? Hey, make a miner's cabin, you know, like, I, I always think that a lot of times, you know, having social media or like little videos or little things that kind of get people excited about things can help sort of like get people just kind of maybe start looking into doing things, you know? So, I mean, I, I, it's funny because I think everything is in the ordinance side. And there's a policy side, but then there's also kind of like a, like a engagement side, but I think that we don't have, we haven't really had, had a lot of chance to work on the engagement side, because, you know, we're such a full town. And, you know, we're really just trying to get the basics and necessities taken care of here. That, you know, but it'd be fun to find a way to actually, we were talking a bit about doing, um, like I started, uh, we created Instagram account for the city of Bisbee and, uh, and I've been thinking about devising a a social media posting schedule, like three to, three times a week or something. We would post it to the Facebook and the Instagram. And it would, and it was, it's essentially a public participation element for the general plan, but also I want to incorporate uh, other, you know, community involvement in the city, you know, for example, um, really encouraging people to get involved in neighborhood meetings. Maybe trying to look for neighborhood champions to really, you know, try to find a way to really just get out there and I, I also think that, you know, we need to, it's, it's, it's an interesting scenario that we have in this city because so many events here, they're so tourist driven, right? So sometimes I feel like it's hard to to know, you might be the local, you might be the tourist, right? But, uh, one thing, you know, and, and, and this is part of the plan too, and I haven't, we haven't done this yet, but this is gonna be a thing coming after the summer is setting up the farmer's market like we talked about a couple of meetings ago. So, I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't know, I could maybe possibly do something, right? Hang out, they have, I don't have a booth or something taped by the city and be engaged with the community, you know?
I'm just.
Yeah, that'd be great. Good to have.
I think that would be.
Yeah. It's like Facebook, I mean, from Facebook, it's really a.
But it, it, it's a big jump from that kind of interaction to interaction face to face.
Yeah.
Farmers market.
Yeah.
Do whatever you. Going, but I think that, you know, how do you integrate that? And maybe, I don't know, maybe you bring a screen and you have all that media there also, I don't.
I mean, yeah, you're just gonna.
Too democratic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you go to any establishment, fifty plus percent of people are making, what are they on their, on their essentially hashtag.
Yeah, that's cool.
Like, like video camera on.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, I mean, and that's, and that's something I need to actually work out that. I'm, I'm actually gonna have, um, a, a Tuesday night at the library in July, and I'm gonna talk about the general plan. I think you're gonna have a poster for it. And, uh, we can really, and I think we can start talking about all of the elements of the plan for outreach. That's gonna be the first thing. And then also I'm gonna start working out some surveys uh, for the plan coming up in the next few weeks. Also, going to be, um, reaching out to our stakeholders that you've all, you've all, the people you've given to me, um, and then some other ones. Uh, we're, we're gonna probably do a questionnaire for all of our stakeholders. Kind of get their perspectives on what they value and think they see that we need. Then, uh, we're probably gonna have in the fall a meeting with them. So with all the stakeholders, it's kind of just get, you know, which I imagine, you know, if you all wanna come to those and it's that stakeholder event, then we will send you the site to that as well, so you can just get a feel for what people are saying.
You already have.
I, I, we have people that we're gonna reach out to. And I imagine, you know, like FMI will, um, Cochise County, you know, just key players in the community. Um, and then all the people that you've all, you've all have, have given me the names of. And then some other names, I've gotten some people in the city. So essentially, I'm just like building kind of all these things together, bringing it all together. I just kind of put it all into like a big document. I had all these other documents that I kind of just put them on, consolidated them, so we could, so I don't get too scattered, you know? So, um, it's, um, it can be quite a process, you know, we're doing Niner and Melissa Hartman, you know, so. Yeah, no, it's great, you know, I wanted to do this, this was like a, one of the goals that I had, so, when I, when I was in grad school. Like, I'd like to do one of those, anyway. Um, but yeah, no, the parting thing, I, I will have to find that document, I would like to see the, you, you know, your. Okay, I'll ask Niner, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna actually write that.
She presented.
Okay.
She has access.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
They don't want.
Yes. Yeah.
Infill.
There is a, you know, Cochise County has a climate, uh, and disaster mitigation plan strategy that they came up with. And so I have been looking at that document because I want to incorporate that into our general plan as well, just a lot of the policies. So that you know, we can, we can really work on climate mitigation.
And that sounds like, and I don't know, but it sounds like our authority. And what we want is all persons in the fire, you know, before the insurance is canceled, you know, what, is there anything we can save?
Yeah. Because, yeah, because with that regulation helps you so that you can keep your insurance or get your insurance back, right? If you have, say, if you're using a fire resistant material on the exterior of your house, you cut back to three. You know, you, you, you know, or even for that matter, the fire suppression system, water, you know, hydrants and, you know, so. Right, I mean, because if you say that there'd be less of a likely, likelihood of an insurance company insuring your property and your wire, fire hydrant, fire suppression system in your city is a little dicey, I don't know. Yeah.
The last couple of summer. Here is fire. Here is fire.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Says, take out the Chevy Apache, plus he only had a bird. It is just a hawk of the nest. Doesn't seem like it's ever. Station. Changeling back to it. It's like, but, you know, why are we, these are the things I think are, are abandoned, even if they're paying the taxes. That was one thing I found, sorry to get off. One thing I found when I was city planner was there were many people who inherited these. Holes of houses boarded up or torn half down or squatters set half of it on fire or something like that. And they still pay the taxes, but they're doing absolutely nothing with it, I think.
So what we're doing with that right now, we actually have a, Melissa and I have a plan. Um, we've been talking a bit about, um, so I, I mean, we went to a brownfield remediation workshop in Gulf Fox. About a month or so ago. And we've been looking into some strategies for. Doing something about these sort of derelict properties. Um, the town of Superior in Arizona has a program called Lean, uh, Clean and Lean, where they essentially clean up the properties and replace the lean on. Right, and then, um, but also we are getting a, we got a, a grant to do housing, uh, to do a housing study. And, and one of the things that we're gonna put in our, uh, you know, with our kind of wishlist or our, he is. Is, um, we are looking for somebody who can, who has the expertise to help us. Sort of get a hold of the people who own these properties and to work out a way to like, get. To sort of like get them to either work with us to essentially. Either fix up the property or sell the property, or we're trying to just find a way to like get people to actually. Not just let their properties sit and rot as like a tax write-off, right, so.
And I don't even think that they, and I don't, I don't know how it would be a tax write-off, maybe. Joe worked pretty hard on getting those cited and he just, he was just.
Yeah.
Um, and just. Just had, I think, yeah, you know, penalization in some fashion, but it's had some. They could, you know, say, you do this or you get this, and if it's thousands of dollars. Monetizing that property, if we can make it more, uh, uh, attractive to. The monetization is a smaller investment than the penalization.
Yeah.
I think it'd be cool.
I mean, you could do a vacancy tax.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking to that, you know. Is that? Yep. Like, like, how do you mean?
Like whether they get an address. Because nobody reported somebody, say, hey, I moved out of that house.
We did go through this about six years, but, um, a city manager at the time. But this was eight.
Yeah, it kind of defeats the purpose of the portable housing. No, no, definitely not, I mean. That's not, that's not, you know, our goal is not to house any, but even at home at all, you know, our goal is to. You know, get places that have been essentially abandoned.
Well, I think that. Go up A Street in, uh, Saginaw, uh, there's a thing with a brick porch.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that's owned by people. Some that are all like that, and, uh. If we went in and scraped the land, let's say, um, and charged back. Maybe that brings the land to a potential development level where they then sell that lot. You know, I don't know. That area, as you know, has a lot of RM.
Yeah.
Uh, that makes it really easy. RM is like, you know, I, it, I wish they made better, and I know that. The one that starts with C, that's the manufactured housing. Uh, they made this one called the Lost. It's this beautiful two bedroom, it's really great.
Yeah.
It's modern, but it, it's really great. Uh, you know, a trailer is sort of a no brainer, it's something they can buy about time.
Yeah.
They can, you know, put it in easily.
Yeah.
I wish we had better, better product that.
You mean, yeah, like a, actually like a manufactured home that.
That was better for the, for the city.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, it's just.
Yeah, it's interesting that. All connected, just by a word or a surge or, you know, sending some information.
It's like it's an affiliate marketing. No, but like, uh, no, I think, I think, I think it's true, I think, you know, you. Because, because when you want, when you want things to go in a certain direction. You do have to give people the help, because otherwise people are gonna come in, and if they have the means, they're gonna do whatever, they're like, can I do this? And you're like, yeah, sure, you know, even though it doesn't maybe necessarily.
Yes, is, I love this idea, if they would. It's just like.
That's the challenge, because I, I, I do think that we can. If we were to reach out, there's organizations like that, you know, it's like here in town, we're, we're using, there's like a place in Sierra Vista. But really, if you wanted to get that variety, a lot of times you would probably go Tucson.
He'll use, you know, ten, ten, eight, yeah, and they, they are similar. Actually, maybe, I think they're probably four, four, they're probably four and eight. What's that, uh, one hour on, uh? Yes, wow.
Melissa worked on that one.
That, they're very similar, I don't know if they're not, like, identical, but they, they paint them different, they put a little different trellis on it, and it's, it's a. Have you, yeah?
Yeah, that's what I think, like, even here in Bisbee, people. There were a lot. The whole porch was on, uh. Started to pick up. So there was some kind of. It was growing.
Yeah, it's actually. Yeah, it's like the, or like the kit houses you can see in, in, um. Warren, right? You see some, some, maybe some Sears kit houses. I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
You can tell, like, they just.
Yeah.
Like, hey, hashtag. You know, community management, like, oh, you.
Yeah, live busy.
Know that there was a five, uh, the west, those Sears. I just can't tell.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, thanks for living one. But, uh, yeah, no, really, you know, and it. You just want better style, you know, don't put a tuna can, but, you know, you don't have to put a McPhee either.
But I don't understand. The impact. Are you. Service to the developer, let's say, and the person who comes in. Built one house on the five. Back end of Warren on the hill. Is that person still paying the impact fees on that well, so the developer that's doing it? Business isn't, I, I just, we gotta be careful. Lawson.
Yeah, I hear you, 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 you definitely want to encourage people to do, you know, uh, building a house. On a lot, you don't wanna discourage them, right now, I don't quite know what their impact fees are.
But the sewer connection.
You're at Bisbee?
Yeah, well, yeah, then, just, that's what you pay. Just get them, and then it's like, that's just your.
Yeah, just be home, the lesson.
Yeah, maybe. But making it cost effective, so they, the budget for, for the bumper or the, the. Make sure that they're, at the end of the day, they're not negative on the right.
Right.
Having a reason of like, rather than leaving it so.
We had that somewhere, I should repeat that myself, but it, it was really good, I don't even.
Yes.
It's. Don't have to be.
Here, Peter Lindman, that's what it is? Oh, you had to get it on thrift books, it's eighty-five bucks on thrift books. She's like, I know how to find you. No, no, but, um.
It's seven hundred pages, so you gotta find the real deal.
Oh, man. Uh, you know, it's interesting, because I've been thinking about, you know, real estate pro, pro forma, because I, I do think that to incentivize. People do like, like perform, the pro forma to, you know, to see where their risk and their, you know, and you, and you plug it in, I mean, I figured that there's a. There's an Excel, an Excel template, spreadsheet template that you can use, right? And it helps you to plug in each number and it calculates it, and, you know, so. Just think, just thinking about that, I guess, I mean, I, I probably have to take a class or do a workshop on writing a pro forma. I mean, reading a book could be a challenge. Oh, there's actually certificates. Pro forma certificate. Anyway, but yeah, I, I'm, that, that's just the only thing is that accepting the strategies actually pop people into doing these things, right? You know, out of the pencil out for you. So, or just general comment.
Yeah.
Uh, we often make reference, as you stated, to how the expedite zoning and refilling procedures, how the. Expedite the processing plans and proposals, believe from development standards. Yeah. Uh, that's all said, but what does that really mean? I get the question, I have a question, and. Uh, certainly reading the newspaper, which, uh, you know, the legislature has been addressing this issue of how to be affordable out there. And of course, the Republican legislature were very much pro development. And it's, and that, many of their proposals are being opposed, opposed by the city of, city of town. Of course, they're reducing some zoning requirements that are. They're testing that, so I, that's important where we're at. Yeah. I, I don't quite know, but that really has come up, and every discussion of it. Is that the man on the developer are not, you know, going, going out, it's possibly. You can reduce that, but again, I'm not, who have the experience in terms of how that can be done, but I don't. I'm just reading in terms of that, that, that debate. Yeah. And it doesn't seem to be resolved in terms of what, how do you do that? You know, what I was thinking about with the legal cities, and I've heard a couple of different perspectives, that their perspective, they say that they're opposed to those. Sort of like wholesale, you know, deregulation of zoning is that they believe in the autonomy of municipalities. You know, which I, I don't know, you know, um, I also think that, you know, the, the Democratic governor opposed it. You know, the bill because, and I was thinking maybe because they were afraid that. Developers would basically run roughshod over this, over the whole state and start just develop. Developers would basically run roughshod over this, over the whole state and start just developing huge swaths of like suburban trackland in. Pinellas County, I don't know, you know, it's it's a, it's really weird.
Viculation.
Yeah, right, and so, but it but it's like it hasn't, the 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 rules in place haven't stopped developers from just going developing like, uh, you know. Just basically, just sprawling out into the desert, so I don't think, you know, that's something that I would, I wanna read, start to read more about. Yeah, I got it.
So, like, we use the word.
Okay.
They're focused on. But, but then you have the small business, mom and pops, small business owner operator, developers. Third third guy out, uh, here for a lot of block, but. Station about who you're. Then it's about the capital, it's not everybody.
Not everybody lends?
When, yeah. Creating a job for them.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, that developer may made a hundred thousand dollar profit, okay, well, they worked on that for two years, they just generated a fifty dollar salary here salary.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I I definitely want to encourage the smaller scale, I I, but I often think. Part part of it, I I think with the general plan, the overarching idea, if you were to just sort of the one thing. Your, what is your vision for future growth and development in Disney? It's like, we're just like, sit back, meditate on it, imagine, like, what would you wanna see, or what would you imagine? Or what would you think would be the the most appropriate or? The best in, you know, use of urban land and the best output. Right? So. I was gonna ask you, I was like, I was like, what's boring for me right now?
So, I don't know which one's Staten Island, but don't go there.
But, yeah, yeah, so, no, I I, you know, I I I think that, that's, you know, our goal here, yes, my. Incurse people to do, to do something like that, so. Well, certainly, you know, I, many, Donnie Hill, specifically, her her relationship with Step Up Bisbee, she's taken upon herself to allow it. Through the title on somebody's dilapidated property.
Yes, yeah.
And then turn it over to the city for destruction, of course, that. You know, needs to be done on many times over, I guess. Which success story in terms of how you, to be addressing that portable housing need, you know, that again is a slow process. And certainly, in our discussion earlier, that Joe Ward, he can cite properties. But then there's the legal process, and so the attorney or somebody who represents the city, just like. Process, you know, following this through the legal process, and that's expensive.
Yeah.
And uh.
Same thing like real estate. That's all they do.
Certainly, they did. Identifying specific possibilities. But having somebody who wanted to get up from the table and and actually pursue them, as Donnie Hill has.
Yeah.
Uh, it's something we, you know, that we need, and, you know, I'm. And I certainly initiated a number of projects in this community, and I've done it with anyone, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting old, old though, so.
You're welcome, we're the friendliest, you know.
Well, she is with the city, not city partnership.
But it's that engagement, letting people know, like, hey, we're friendly to it, we're open to it, we're gonna work with you. Because it's gonna be a a mutual benefit.
I do think that that means with its plan, that it has to be based in reality. And not high in the sky, wouldn't it be great if all the streets were paved in silver and gold, you know, it's like. It has to be something that we can really achieve. I don't, and it's been a long time since I read the last plan, but I don't think that was as. You know, criteria was as doable as it seemed, you know, it it sort of seemed like, well, the city's so good. And we all think it is, but then it's going to attract this whole population of people, and it didn't happen.
Well, they they, yeah, they did, they threw San Jose under the bus, though, I gotta say that.
To some extent, you're right, but San Jose, I mean, with with uh Conklin did there with his. Offices and warehouse, I thought was pretty successful.
Well, actually, I was one of the first on my mind in terms of, you know, the idea of identifying opportunity in working with the developer. My understanding of Todd is that he has sent the choir, those what were residential lots behind him.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, I mean, I think that he certainly, you know, I only have three conversations with him, but anyway, that. Kind of under the impression that he he has consolidated some of that land behind him. Who opposed him initially, um, and so that that certainly is an area, I really kind of think that area a lot ninety-two. Makes the most sense to me in terms of that overlay just that you're talking about, but certainly there is an individual saying, just what you said, you know, if we. Provide lots where it's someone that literally pull in a manufactured home overnight. You know, that's an easy process, that's certainly more than trying to buy a piece of land and and building it and so forth and going through that.
So what is that process? Is is this something that you um work with? I know that there are city planners that that have a lot of say in um modifying. Or allowing certain things, if we've heard, I think we heard Joe saying that. Something like a manufactured building, there's different levels of that, different shades of gray, some of them. Well, we saw that fire dominium.
Yeah.
On in Saginaw, that it never came before us, so was that a? Was that a easing of restrictions from, you know, the city, or was that?
That was, that, uh, you know, was it, because I I had a conversation with Havi about that, because I was curious about it, because you look at it and it does look. Much a lot of big shop, but um. It's kind of one of those things where you can't, okay, so it really has to just follow the. Uh, international residential code standards, right, safe, you know, it it's following standards of like what we require for housing in terms of being. Somewhere you can actually live in, and it will, like, fall in on you or whatever, so, it's. I think, you you know, we can't really regulate the aesthetics outside of the, of of a building outside of the historic district.
Well, I'm just saying that the manufacturing or the the, uh, you know, I I believe, and if I'm wrong, I apologize. I believe he made a statement on one of these evenings that those containers, everybody's always talking about those containers. The containers were a building material, that's what he considered, and that's a manufactured. Piece, so is a trust, so is, you know, a lot of building parts. So, is that, that doesn't have to come before us, I understand.
Right.
You know, because it's a building material.
Yeah, so like with the, with the many, with the um containers, uh. I I'm guessing, you know, with with Havi and the whole container storage thing that we have been talking about.
Well, it's not the storage I'm talking.
Oh, you're gonna be actually using containers as a building material.
As a part of the house, which I think people have a very optimistic. Through the thing and restructured it, what's the point?
Just the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is kind of at that point, isn't it, it's kind of, I mean, it's an interesting, you know, building material. We, but we don't regulate that, you know, because because there is a provision in the International Residential Code IRC. You know, that shows you, tells you, you know, kind of, it's prescribed on how to use shipping containers as building material. And if you follow these standards, then you can build it, you know, you could bring it, set it up in your lot in Bisbee.
So what if a manufactured housing, if we call it manufactured housing, follows the IRC?
Yeah.
Isn't a bird or a home you're given some mediency where. You know, even though it's manufactured in Phoenix.
Yeah.
It can be brought down here and set on a lot.
Yeah.
Because that really is, I think, the future of cost savings is you're building it in a warehouse rather than stick built.
Yeah.
It's, I love that, but it's something of the past.
Yeah, factory-built homes, right.
Or the future.
Order of things of that, they're just reintroducing a new generation, that's what.
Yeah.
But Sears nineteen oh nine.
Yeah.
Nineteen forty, they started that, why? Because everybody was coming back from the war, and there was a housing shortage, and there was a book.
Yeah, but was that, I, and I don't nitpick, and I know we're. But was that a flat pack of pieces? I mean, were you just buying pre-cut lumber with numbers on them, or were you actually buying panelized construction?
So, I'm about to return the book back to the library, do you want to sell? Literally, it's a Sears home, it's their their pedal. And literally, they'd ship it to you in a shipping container, and they told you, this is the cost of the building material. With labor, it should cost this value. And it was all built to the quality of.
Yeah.
Quality of work.
Whatever the standard.
Somebody could come in and some, they could give this drop somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I I think that, I mean, I wanna go back into to sort of why manufactured homes were kind of. Zoned out of R one zoning, which I think really comes down to the fact that people. Especially when a lot of the zoning zoning codes were established in this country, I just think that people were very focused on excluding people. You know?
Yeah.
Um, and and I think that manufactured homes have a stigma, and I think people were really working for exclusionary zoning. And I think that's why we have those stigmas, that's why you, you could build a container home now, but you could, you can, you couldn't own a manufactured home. Because container homes kind of came about, kind of like after, I think, I think, I think there's still gonna be people that we, they're gonna be upset about them, but. I think that, yeah, manufactured homes just have this very specific statistic, even though it's an outdated, and I I think that. You know, like, especially now, manufactured homes are, uh, you know, they have so many standards applied to them, you know.
You remember that?
Oh, yes. You 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 were. Yeah, yeah, so.
So if we don't have a policy, that is. But not the, not the bill. Like, hey, we don't have a policy, it skips.
Yeah.
It goes straight to to vertical.
Yeah, like, you know, as they say, buy rights, people that buy rights.
So the only reason all this is history, where it has to go is the.
An R one versus an R N. Seen that they are.
Right.
If they're there.
Me, that's like, I've seen, oh, there's no manufactured homes, I'm like, there's one there, there's one there, but at the end of the day, our homes. Some of these manufactured homes, what's great, you know, they'll. It's about health.
Yeah.
They're probably safer than a lot of those people are really. So why are we, why are we doing a stigma? Does somebody, does, hey, give a shortage of labor, I don't wanna get a contractor, like.
And having been in the business itself, I've seen framing of a site versus framing on a. On a flatbed of of a factory, framing on a fat flatbed of a factory by a robot or a nailing.
Yeah.
I think part of this, like, first, this is my personal, I think we got over. Think this is so much, like, you can buy a kit home, put it together. Like, but I don't know, you can't do that, now you gotta hire a contractor, oh, you paid over six hundred dollars, like, the the code is so, like, six hundred dollars, what can. You know what I mean, like, the the policy and legislation is so outdated, for long ago, it just doesn't.
Right, you just stay back to the, you you essentially focus on the safety, right, environment and. The stability of the building and. You know.
You do have the I, the IRC to fall back.
Yeah.
Which we only adopted this year, or within the last. Believe that, yeah, that there was previous, it was still IRC, but.
So, yeah, we adopted the twenty eighteen code, we had a maybe twenty thirteen code before.
Here we are, twenty five, forty, that'd be twenty eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, that's always the case for the building.
We're working on, yeah.
And when I started, it was, there was no. Building code.
Okay.
We had a national code, it was national.
Well, I'll book you some, all right, all right.
Yeah. Just some sketches.
This is, I mean, that makes sense, though, sketches, you, you know, diagrams, so speaking of which, I, you know, with the, with the. With the upcoming zoning code in the overlay, I'm wanting to. Do a bit of of suggest, you know, I flagstaff, the flagstaff zoning code is very interesting, if you ever get a chance to look at it. They actually have kind of a. Uh, they actually, in their code, they actually have diagrams, they have a kind of a form-based code, right? So they're really working towards creating a. A sort of an urban environment that is kind of cohesive and works together, I think that overlays, you know, completely pushing for. Something along those lines, you know, suggestions for creating a harmonious environment. They do. I mean, you you can often do a certain, they they have a, they call it ten second zone, it's very interesting, but you can do like you're at. They have the zoning that's very similar to our zoning, but then they can opt into ten second zone, so, you know, since they're out there in the woods and the mountains. They start with an urban core zone, and they kind of, uh, it gradually. Uh it gradually kind of expands out to um. They kind of an infill zone and then kind of like an suburban suburban zone and travel. And but it's it's all meant to work permanently together, create kind of an environment that actually. Is enjoyable to be in, you know. It's interesting, you know, I I actually called them up on the phone and I was like, hey, I'd like to learn more about your zoning code. One of the planners, they're just kind of pulling me in on it.
Let's say you are a home. What are the, just, you know, what is the, what are the plans that look like, who I need to sit, if I come in? An example, like, here's a golden plan, we can find a website, or if there was a gold plan, then it would make. Easier and individual to know exactly what you want versus the virus and the full.
Yeah. Uh actually, we do, we do have a check in in our in our um building plans, a little process, we do have a checklist. Um it might, it might be good to actually have a sample plan.
Like, so you could. You can actually go online and see everything's. Right, so if your neighbor built a house, you can go on there. They have DRB for everything.
I see.
Everything is good, DRB, and they work with uh. But you can go and pull the package. It's all available, it's all the data.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can. Like you get all the information. Hey, a permit's being pulled over here, oh, I wonder what they're building. You go look it up, oh, okay, they're building a dollar bill, here, we don't know.
Yeah.
It's just worse gossip word of mouth, and that could be dangerous and it's only because the rumors start that aren't true.
Yeah.
And. Because the.
Yeah, I mean, I I I believe it's there, but it is, can be buried in.
Which are very small.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest challenge.
Yeah, and that is, most cities have at least fifty people. That's.
Yeah.
How much were you utilizing?
And maybe those are just giving way.
Would would be a pro forma? Oh, you have.
Those slots.
To bury a sewer line or bury a water line, you, you gotta get that, you gotta rent that one very.
Or do it during monsoon.
Great flat lot, lots of potential, I mean, I have roads, there's the infrastructure, like, oh, you. But there's always those little bit of things, I learn this, but I'm not.
Would you call it hard pass? Hard dick, okay.
More excited, you thought. Here, from hole all around.
So so um when there, it it's that's essentially the biggest issue is the. Burying the utilities, that's the deal breaker for something like that, like for a lot of lots.
Not just the floor and the ground, that guy's all free.
Yeah. Now, that would be the, now, the USGS soil survey, does it, does it, I I looked at before, but does it include collegiate? Bedrock, everything. Okay. Um, right, six forty-five, uh vibes check, how's everybody feeling? Hey, I'm trying to, to make a meeting, I'm trying to make everybody enjoy the meeting as much as.
Well, I guess a couple of things here to go over, just letting you know, I wrote not to. Make reference to the county's. Water conservation program, but this could make reference to the water wise program.
Water wise?
The water wise.
Water wise, okay.
And of course, uh the county is doing terms of water conservation. Larger projects, but certainly. A water wise program, which I originated, it's certainly active, and certainly they can advise people considering the. Without their, of of hazard home, in terms of what they can do. Interesting thing, I remember at first my home. I bought this, kind of annoying, they bought this speed tree, the farmer's yard. Twenty-five years ago, or so, when I bought my house, that tree covered my whole backyard, I can't, I can't believe, I mean, it was. Trying to think that I did. Knowing what I was doing, but. And and I certainly have part of the coolest block in town because of huge trees that were there and ones that I had.
I agree.
And certainly, it's, you know, it's, I think that's really a goal and likewise, I think that. There's opportunity these two. Do water harvest.
Yep.
And I think the best example, which I initiated likewise, was the, I mentioned before, is the water that comes down next to the tennis courts. Which used to always end up at on on every major rain flooding in football.
Yeah.
Well, after bugging the city. Why it takes so, takes so long to do what seems to be a logical thing, we just cut the curb, like they're conged. All that water now runs out into Vista Park. So here it is in Vista Park. Duh, but you know, sometimes those projects of logic goes the same to me, you know, it don't always move as fast, but anyway, that. That was done and and that was certainly a very obvious project there, and I think there's probably some other smaller ones that. At the right end of your plan, you know, and I think. Contract requiring people. I think that, you know, there's this opportunity to identify how things, the public property, project like that, and also just urging people to. To have a consultation with the water wise person, because they buy a property or or permanent app a property, what can I do better? In terms of water conservation, uh the day water and doing um. Yes, game. Plant scheme. Use the water use.
Okay.
Certainly, you do, having a strikehole myself, and I thought that I feel him in terms of. Do I want the looks of the double hunt? Window, and I've done everything in terms of reading the books, in terms of what you can do to insulate a double hunt window. Or do I want to replace that, you know, with a modern window, and I've chosen.
Inbuilds, that was a really great.
Certainly, I think in the Midwest, where a lot of these. Pressed the home were built likewise, you know, the weather is so much more severe and that's certainly, you know, here, I can, I feel that the cost. To me, of doing what I'm doing is less than what it would be if I had the same home in Nebraska or I came from, you know, and that's certainly. Directly, but I think that certain people are. Buying, assessing that, making those choices. And um.
Yeah, the, yeah, all the ones around here, cancer trees.
Yeah, they. Three thirty thousand feet there. And they poison the soil around it, so the neighbors. But they're rich for a running. And apparently they don't need a lot of water.
Yeah, they seem to do pretty well out here. Um. But speaking of the water management, would you say, so are you familiar with the um? Watership Management Group, Tucson, so they essentially. Uh have workshops. Uh they they actually help people do, like, build their own basins and do water catchment systems.
Yeah.
And does Wat, Busy Water, Busy has a water wise program, something along those lines, do they do anything like that there?
Sure, they'd be very much interested in doing.
Okay, yeah, and they maybe could get some consultants to come and like, do like a build, be build your own basin or build, you know, your own water. Management system or.
And of course, there. Yes. We know that in certain. In past.
Oh. Oh, really?
But Shapo was, as you mentioned earlier, they said it's about sustainability and and preservation. And it's a, it's a trade.
Yeah, we're giving that with solar, electric, also. It's a modern world.
Yeah.
There was a time when the chimney was an environmental, you know, microenvironment, environmental necessity. And nobody complained about that, and now chimneys are, you know, they're, they're cherished. And, you know, solar collectors, what I have always said to, and ERB has the solar collectors. When the next energy comes along, whatever.
Uh, yeah, okay. You know, I was thinking. Is we could, you know, I I I, you know, it's possible to work on, to do something like getting a grant. To get. You know, for example, water wise to do like, you know, workshops for homeowners or something. Or, you know, if they did charge a fee or had a scholarship or, you know, something, I'm thinking about like. You know, like the water manager, so do you see a lot of uh opportunities for worker curbs, curb cuts in Disney?
Well, I I just had to go out, that's just an obvious one, it was like a plan in the house, and so, I mean, that got was so obvious, it was huge. Uh you know. Had an annual flooding problem that was eliminated and in reducing the amount of water, putting on the, on the Vista Park. You know, it was all around, pretty, pretty, pretty.
Common sense.
Common sense approach, I think, I think others are less, though, I mean, certainly is, I mean, I always look at, you know, how how can I retain all the. Rainwater falls on my house, well, it's certainly easier for I live than in an old business.
Yeah.
And so.
It's assessing that, right, so how do you assess it? Well, you can have the rain.
Yep.
Well, that's starting to be a problem.
Yeah, may maybe it's wrong, right, fly by, like, where these waters are, there's maps out there that you.
Yeah, okay.
Not inaccurate, then you divide the plant.
Yeah, I mean, one thing you can do is, is, you know, you put something like this in the plan, you actually have a policy, right? Talks about this sort of thing, then what you do is you, is you apply it to the grant. And you say, it's in our general plan that we're trying to do this. And then they're like, oh, you're committed to this, your community obviously wants it, they said yes to the plan, and the plan said yes to this thing. So.
Well, I think you made that point, and I think that you have too, in terms of we need to incorporate these things into our general plan. Uh for purposes of giving the grant, so, and I.
Yeah.
I I.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's that's sort of like why I'm not afraid of some pie in the sky stuff, because sometimes it's gonna not happen, but sometimes it will happen, but you kind of. Spaghetti and that fit it, maybe, you throw that spaghetti against the wall.
I think that.
All the dreams, all the. Let's make realistic goals that we can accomplish and timeframe, and bucket list.
I agree.
And keep adding.
Yeah, the bucket list is the the pie in the sky, and I don't really think that's pie in the sky, I think if you're doing it to. Cap into some resource, that's realistic, you know, if you're getting a grant based on something you put in the. You know, or the potential to get a grant even, based on something you put in the plan, I think that's, that's not pie in the sky, but, but. I think. See it all. See it, video bikes, you know, whatever.
See, there's, there's money for that, too, though, that's the thing, because.
But everybody walking to their little, little store on the corner and, you know, I would love that, but. You know, can that happen in the next ten year?
Well, you know, the thing is, is you can, you can at least put a provision in there that kind of pushes in that ten, that that nudges it in that general direction.
And and you've talked about it, the uh rezoning so that there are. Uh in a residential area, you can have a little, like a mimosa type of thing, and you probably don't know about the most of it, the little grocery store.
Yeah, I've seen it, I looked in the window.
Yeah, they.
They open up by appointment only.
Yeah.
I'll figure.
Exactly.
I'm on the red.
Cash only.
I'm on the redness, I, I'm welcome, so anyway, I'm up there every Saturday morning.
Get the cardio.
Yeah. Cash only, open Saturday nine to eleven.
You gotta give your driver's license, show you that you're actually a resident of Bisbee rather than from out of town.
Right, right.
Anyway, they're hand tied.
That's, yeah, I know, they, yeah, and yesterday, they, they came from somewhere else, so. But once you get there, you shut the door and lock it.
You hear the sound of a death toll.
Yeah.
All right, um.
You're moving on.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, no, we we're doing, we're, like I said, we've got a lot of, I got a lot of stuff put together, and now I'm gonna really start working on. Taking everything that everybody's given me and starting to populate, you know, get and and review a lot of stuff and. You know.
It might not seem like it, but we appreciate it, you're doing really, really good work.
Yeah, thanks.
And really, I can see your hearts.
Yeah.
We're all adjourned with a funny story.
Okay.
I like that.
I have this friend, longtime friend, that I'm. Interested in peculiar antiques. Anyway, he just bought a property in Tombstone. That. Has a collection of railroad cars. A while, right, at the, I guess I haven't actually been there, but anyway, at the, where the, you know, where the inspection station was, or should it. Border control station was. Anyway, he, I actually, he's visiting me just now when I came here, but anyway, his question was, is your finding the zoning, is. Why does the county finding a zoning commission or state or ordinance under accessory. Line units prohibit railroad cars? There's a specific line in the county's ordinance that says, because it not excludes. Railroad cars, not that he's considered doing that, but anyway, it got interesting, what he was interested, what led to someone putting that statement in there? That line in there, that 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 accessory.
Yeah.
Line unit, that railroad car are.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Shipping containers.
Right, exactly, that is the same thing, so. Okay, we ready to adjourn?
Yeah.